Let's all turn our microphones on, please. Mute your cell phones if you have them on you. Time being six o'clock, I call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Here. There is a quorum present. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
Clemish, no.
Kevin, no.
And no. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
A move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. Now is the time for public comment, would any citizen care to make a public comment at this time? There being none, we close public comment. Item five, approval of the October 5th, 2021 meeting minutes.
I've moved to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve the October 5th minutes. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero, minutes are approved. Item number six, ARPA funds and I'd Bailey, and I believe I'm saying that correctly. And I Bailey was the accounting firm, I believe, that was the clearinghouse for the CARES Act at the state level. So essentially, our state county commission association has made an agreement, and that was in the packet with this accounting firm, to give general advice on costs that are questions that we would have with the ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. So the association is actually the ones paying I'd Bailey, and they are asking counties if we want to participate in this, to pay a $2,000 fee, to be able to send questions to District Three, who will put all those questions together and send them to I'd Bailey, and then they will come back to us with answers. So some discussion here, I guess, is I'd Bailey takes no responsibility for the advice they give us. If it's bad advice and we follow it, we are on the hook. So take that with a grain of salt, I guess, as to what qualifies and what does not.
Well, I think we're going to need some guidance on what we can use those funds for and what we cannot use those funds for. Obviously, we had a request to use some of those funds for the hiring of another attorney, which I don't know that that falls within that purview, but I think we need some help somewhere.
I gotta agree with Wanda on this is even though they're not gonna stand behind this, at least they're gonna research it and it's somebody else looking at it as a complex as this is. I think I Bailey has done a good job for the association in the past, and the majority of the counties from what I've heard in Peter, and then even at the eight county meeting are going this route. It's an opportunity to help us spend the ARPA funds, and this is something I can support. It's just another set of eyes looking at it, our own District Three and then these guys, so.
So at least least expensive.
Yes.
quasi insurance that you possibly could get.
Exactly.
And they are very reputable firms.
They are.
They do. Yeah.
So it just to touch base on a little bit on the ARPA funds, I know there's been some questions with transferring money out of that fund. I did meet with a state auditor, Jeff's from the state auditor's office, right Karen? State auditor, okay, from this, yep, from the state auditor's office, I didn't want to assign him to the wrong government body with Patty last week, and we were talking because there was some concern with the revenue loss area. And it was interesting that our national association, together with the Government Finance Officers Association, put together this nice little spreadsheet for the nation to use. And the auditor's office hadn't seen it until our county sent it to them. So it kind of opened the door for all of our other counties, they said Brookings County actually said they didn't think they had revenue losses. And when they put their numbers in the spreadsheet, they had over a million dollars in revenue losses that they could claim and spend on anything they want to essentially. So we went through and the only error that we did, the first time we did the calculation, was they suggested we use audited numbers and we had used unaudited numbers. So when he sat down and and helped pull all those numbers in, the losses for 2020 are now 1.3 million dollars. And so we asked him a few questions about how do we start spending those dollars? Should we say, well, we're going to pave one mile a road this week, should we transfer $20,000 out or 50 or whatever it is? And he says, no, he said he would wait till the end of the year and then do one transfer out of that fund to cover everything that we're allowed with the 1.3 million. And so what that does is it allows you to continue tracking your real costs versus tracking those costs in a whole separate number, another fund. So when you do budgeting next year, it's still where it should be and and such. But they are trying to figure out how to do all of those journal entries and then get those out to the counties, so we are all the same. So when you look at that, so our new, our base year for 2019 was $14 million, 779,355. And in that calculation, instead of the 4.1% increase we can get each year, it is now 5.647. So because when they looked at how we were calculating the previous years, we had input the loan for the NAPA project, and you can't include loans. So when we took that out, our county was actually showing more than a 4.1% increase over those three years, which came out greatly in our favor. So from 2020 to 2021, we'll be able to put that 5.64% increase on there. So again, really happy they came down and sat sat with us and recalculated those numbers. But he felt all of the road projects qualify, he said essentially anything that you have in your regular budget, you can use those revenue loss dollars to reimburse. As far as the other part, we didn't talk about, does an ambulance qualify, etc., we're really waiting for the final rule to come out on some of those. And I do, I have been keeping a list of what some of our departments are asking for, and all the things they're kind of asking for and estimates for revenue replacement, essentially use up our 4.4 million. The other thing we learned was in here, we can use these dollars for administrative oversight of the funds. And there's another county that's going to use the, I guess there's some general rule that 10% of your grant can be allocated to administrative oversight. So this other very large county is using the 10% for administration, and 10% of ours is $442,000 that we we could claim for Patty to essentially oversee this. So you can see how you can walk through all these funds, and you know, when we initially got these, my biggest fear was we wouldn't have anything to spend them on. And now I don't believe we're going to have that problem by the end of it. So that kind of gives you gives you an idea of of this this big pot of money, and our second trance will be issued in May of 2022. So some things on my list, we've already, our state's attorney, and that does qualify, radios, we already purchased a computer for our BSO. I've got two ambulances on there. The HVAC upgrade we did in this building, we did before March 1st. So we can't, we can't count that one. And then Paul has requested a mobile shelter, possibly a bunkhouse and some sandbags. So those are some of the items that we will need to make sure qualify before we we do the expenditures on those, so. Any questions on all of that, that update? Okay. So the topic here is generally ARPA funds, that's in, I wanted to update you on what has kind of happened. We're hoping the final rule is out by December. But if you want the interim rule, I'll happily send that to you, or you can find it in the federal register. So I Bailey.
I move to approve the use of $2,000 in ARPA funds to basically buy the help of I'd Bailey, which I've always called Ivy Bailey's. But I'm probably saying it wrong.
I don't know, that's that's how I heard it, so I'm repeating it, so. Oh, I Bailey, okay, so we have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve spending $2,000 for the services of I'd Bailey in reviewing ARPA funds. Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. We are now at item seven, we'll start with claims.
A little approval of the claims.
I will second that. And if we may speak to the claim that we didn't pay last month, I would speak to that. Or last meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox to approve the claims. Did you want to make some comments about that claim?
I just would like to report that I reviewed the submission by the law firm that represented Mr. Heinz on his writ, which was to a degree successful in that it was resolved. Excuse me, the claim is appears to be charged out at the court-appointed rate for all entries, and there were a number of entries for which they did not charge at all. And I would suggest that we pay it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the claims, say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero, claims are approved. The auditor treasure report and pool cash report. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Fox to approve the auditor treasure and pool cash reports. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. Mental illness quarterly reports.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Clemish, second by Fox to approve the mental illness quarterly reports. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. And we are closed on item seven. And item eight, Mr. Hawkins.
Hello, everybody.
I'm Steve.
You did, or are you asking that they did?
Thank you. Yeah, me too, great.
Thank you. To refresh your memory, the the ambulance bid was a 2022 actual purchase, we were going to, we bid that bid the project now so they could get a chassis truck itself ordered so they could start that process, they'd be able to be delivered, built and delivered. So they could remount our animals next next year. The bid came in at, as you can see, 149,894, it met all of the bed bid specs with the four-year accumulation fund. We have 141,000 as of 2022 budget, we'll have 141,000.
Where does that say that?
What's that?
141,000.
That's just what's in our budget.
Okay, where does it say how much the truck costs?
The truck, if you look right here, this right here.
It's the 149.
No, it took me a second.
The obvious place.
I should have liked, yeah.
So we, we've been estimating what's the, what this is going to cost for three or four or five years.
Four years.
Four years, we just put some money away.
Yeah, I think the first year was 50,000, the next year was just kind of been kind of slowly building down. Yeah, I will personally, I could say that I never expected it to come in at 150,000. But I also wasn't expecting the increase in everything that's going on.
So 5% inflation right now.
Yeah, yes. So I guess the the question.
How many bids did we get, Steve?
Just the one.
Just this is the only one.
Just the one.
Are there any other, have these, have we worked with this company before?
Yes.
We have, they do, they do good work.
They do great work. And their customer service is fantastic, you call them for apartments here the next day.
So what do they usually cost? Prior to 2021.
I mean, the, we last, four years ago, we purchased a new ambulance at 100 and I want to say around 140, I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head now. We, the ambulance before that, that was actual remount was like in 130 range, 127 range, I think it was. So I just didn't expect the chassis, of course, have, you know, the trucks itself have just really jumped in price as well. And that's, I think that's where the the driving factor of the of this increases at. But I'm not an economic guy, I tried to stay you know, informed, but.
Any other questions for Steve?
Just so I'm clear, this is not the rest of the ambulance, this is just
one.
The chassis.
No, actually, what it is, what they, what the remount is, it's the chassis, plus they take our box off of the old chassis, put on the new chassis, and then they fix all the dents and scratches and dings, they re, they redo the floor, if the floor needs to be redone, they take care of the upholstery, it's just a complete, not a complete where they would just gut it all out, put all new stuff in, but it's kind of like remodeling your bathroom or your kitchen.
Can I leave a few dings in and bring the price?
Actually, the, actually, the the only part of the of the box that we are actually painting is the front of the box, you know, where all the but the rest of the side and the backs aren't, the back are not going to be painted because it's still in really good shape. So that was, that was a savings. Yeah, that was a savings.
Entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the ambulance bid as presented in the amount of like 149,894.
Do I have a second?
I guess I'll second it, Mr. Clemish does not want to.
Motion by Kettering, second by Fox to approve the ambulance bid for 149,894. Further discussion?
You know, for further discussion, I, with the price going up, we're gonna have to start budgeting more per year to put into that fund, because it's just, it's just not going to be enough anymore, so. What were we at 50 and then?
56, 40, 25, and 20.
It's gonna have to go up because the next one will probably be a lot more, so.
So the motion on the table is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero.
All right, very good, thank you.
You have a report to go over?
Report, yes, we do, is there any questions about the report? Let's see if I can answer any questions on here.
The only I'm sorry. Only question I had is, and I'm glad you did the breakdown, is I see for this report, we have 14 pickups within the city limits of Irene. This is what I
For the whole year, yes.
Is that for the whole year?
That is for the whole.
Okay, have we thought about working with the city of Irene for some type of reimbursement for that, and the reason I said, say that is because Irene is, it's not located in Yankton County. We're helping out our neighbors, it's a good thing, but on the same point, you know, it's the taxpayers of Yankton County through property taxes which fund our ambulance. And maybe that's something that we could, we could look at doing, it's 14 for the year, which is, that's just up to this point of the year, right? So it could be around 20, we don't know. But that could help us out and help them out as well, so. I believe what that agreement statement we had is, had you sign that there is a potential for some reimbursement? Is that a conversation that we've had with the this city of Irene and see if we could do something like that?
Actually, I believe it was brought up at one of the commission meetings during the year.
Sure, sure.
And I, I really don't think that that, I think that's, that's an honest question that needs to be posed to the to the, to the Irene council, city council, where I think, but I'm not sure if I'm the guy that means, I don't know if I have the
clout?
The clout, yeah, I think.
Sure you do.
That might be a little above my pay grade to you, so.
Well, it's, it's something that I think we need to be looking at, I mean, it's at least one trip a month, if not more. We want to be good neighbors to them, but at the same point, it's not, that's not a route we necessarily have to do either. It is really outside of our, our county, I just have an issue with spending taxpayer dollars outside of the county in another county, and it just doesn't sit well with me.
But can I ask, Steve, that part of Irene is Yankton County?
Yeah, but he has it actually here, Irene west of
It's in three counties, right.
But he has, he actually has it broken out where west of 452.
It's a weird.
Yeah, at 452, like the the football, the rodeo, maybe the football field is kind of
From the gas station, the North South Road, everything west is in Yankee County, everything, everything northeast is Turner, everything southeast is Clay. But maybe that's a conversation, you know, we could, we could have at some point, you know, I don't think we need to just a little bit of help from that area, I think would
You know, and I think this has brought, been brought up several times, and I know it's near and dear to your heart, are you willing to follow up on it?
I am not the ambulance liaison.
Just because you're the ambulance liaison does not make you responsible for the entire county. So if you are concerned about this, I encourage you to contact the city of Irene.
Well, I think this is something that we should look into, and I can, I can look into that. Is before I do that, is there any support from the commission to, to work out an agreement with Irene? I mean, we're, we're going above and beyond, we are going, you know, outside of the county, spending tax dollars outside, which is a good thing.
Are we going to draw a line within the city of Irene, where, which parts in Clay, which parts in Turner, which parts in Yankton?
He's already, he already is doing that in his point of pickup here. Everything west of 452 is
Within the city, but I think what this Fox is trying to say is that it's
It's in three different counties.
So it's kind of Turner County, south of 46.
So you need to drag them across 46 to get them into the Yankton County?
Well.
Ambulance.
I mean, and if, if we want to, if we want to do that, I know we do that, some of that in Nebraska where we go, and if we're if we're fine spending money outside the county, I guess, we're fine doing that, but I I think when we have these, we should have these agreements set up with these other organizations because we're having our ambulance go outside of the county to do this service, which is not a bad thing, but I think a little reimbursement is in order for that. If it was once or twice a year, I wouldn't have an issue with it, but it's at least a once a month, if not more often than that, which is
I don't disagree.
Any other comments on the report?
I have one question, I think it's on page seven. Private payment totaled out 138,706, that's, that's due.
You're talking on the entry report? And I'm trying to find that right now, and it's the, you're talking about
It's the only one that's a big amount. 138,000, is that the funds that this?
Those are people, those are, that's money that are either is the fees for people that don't have insurance, or fees for people's deductible.
So my question is, is this the fund that, 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 or that organization that's collecting our bills is working on?
We are working hard at trying to
But is this, are they doing that?
What's that?
Trying to collect these bills?
Yes, they're trying to collect those bills.
We changed that process, didn't we?
Um, yes.
A year ago, okay, so what would this amount have been a year?
It's less now than it was then, but it's still not an acceptable level. The thing is, is that you can only get
How much less?
I don't know, I'd have to look and see.
I'd like to know that.
Okay. That the you know, when, when we're going after people that don't have insurance, we're trying to get them to pay bills, I mean, that's, in a lot of cases, is not an easy task, and we have put together some processes that we hope will help stimulate people to engage in pain.
I, I, Steve, I agree completely, I'd just like to know the results.
For the last year, between there and here, sure, I can get that for you.
That's all I want to know.
Okay, you bet. So the private pays 12 months ago, okay.
The last thing I had is going over the ambulance task force recommendations, one of them was trying to work with the state through the legislature for reimbursement, I think it was, was that correct, Sherry? Like as some sort of property tax? Have we followed up on that? I wasn't on that.
I did, actually, I, I contacted our three legislators, and there was no interest in supporting that.
So you know, with that, that being one of the major driving forces for longs, long-term sustainability of the ambulance was creating that extra tax, I mean, have we
Actually, I think that's a little off.
Well, it's
I don't think it was the goal to get that done, it was, it was the hope that it, we could create another option other than creating an ambulance district, which would essentially set aside from the county and be its own taxing authority.
Have we followed up on any of that then, because I, I know that we're in a little Have we followed up on any of that then? Because I, I know that we're in a little bit different situation, which is good because of the COVID dollars and, and ARPA funds. The ambulance is, is benefited a lot, and it's helped itself. My concern is when those funds dry up, which they will, we're gonna be back in the same situation where we were. And, and there were some good recommendations from the ambulance task force. And I, I just hope we follow through with those. So, thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the quarterly report for the ambulance.
I'll move approval of the quarterly report for the ambulance.
Second. So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox to approve the report. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Steve.
Oh, Steve, did you have a, a one you wanted me to sign? I, mine says copy.
Yeah.
Okay, not a big deal.
Okay, I'll, um, I can just email it to you.
Okay.
And you can sign it and just send it back.
That'll work.
Okay.
Did we?
I tagged them all, every one of them. Okay.
Did we skip the mental illness quarterly reports?
Nope, we got that. You voted. We went kind of through those fast. So next item, nine, Mr. Better.
Yeah, I was, I was asked to bring forward to see if you wanted to talk anymore about IT services. We've kind of been going back and forth for a while. We've had some inquiries and some people that have expressed some interest in possibly providing that service to us. And so I guess at this point, we had a lot of, department had data that, that, that I had sent to you quite a while back. We did a draft RFP. So just wondering where we're at, if we wanna do anything now that our consultant has, has resigned, if and how we wanna move forward.
How many firms has shown interest? And are they local?
We've had a couple. They're not local.
That was my beer.
Yeah, they're usually out of ways. But, you know, maybe the, still the, the way to go about it is to send out an RFP and get some, some people that are interested and see who would work the best for us. And it's kind of up to you how you wanna move forward.
And so Clay and Turner and Hutcherson and, and Bon Home, they all contract out services still.
Currently, yeah, it sounds like.
Okay. At the A County meeting, I, I, we didn't have very good attendance, in my opinion, from the, the area counties. The A County meeting, I, I think Yankton dominated, obviously, because it was here. But I did kind of throw that out there as something that if three counties went together and hired a, an expert, we could share in that cost. And everybody's always so hesitant to do that because of the control issue.
Right. And I think part of it is too, is the response issue too. If you get too spread out and people are having to drive an hour or two just to get to some place.
But if we end up contracting Sioux Falls, they're driving an hour to get down here. They were using the same consultant we were.
Yep.
And he, you know, had to drive.
And that was a half hour at least. So, yeah, it's, it's a tough deal, you know, and
I think it's just such an opportunity.
Yeah, some have, you know, have, have said in the past, maybe they could hire someone closer to the area if, if we decided to move forward on something. But just wanted to get the discussion at least started, see if you had any thoughts on, on where you would maybe like to go. We can certainly look at different options.
I'm certainly open to a request for proposal. We need to get something going. And maybe that will spur a couple of these neighboring counties who we know are in the same boat we are right now to look at that process a little closer.
I can certainly contact them too and see what
I think it's worth a phone call. You might have better luck than I did.
Sounds good.
Dustin, did you wanna address the commission? He's why don't you come up here, assist, introduce yourself. He's actually given us a proposal, and he's been around to all the departments and everything, so.
Sure. So my name is Dustin Spurlick. I'm with the IT outlet out of Sioux Falls. Currently reside in Lenox. My co-partner is actually my wife. We're on date night tonight. So we, we use this opportunity to get away from our newborns. Thanks for having us here. Yeah, we've been up here a couple of times, kind of looked over all the different areas that you guys are looking for support. So our team, we've been around IT for about fifteen years now. A lot of this type of, of business is, is general consulting, working with small businesses, counties, governments, hospitals. So we've kind of got our foot in the door in a, in a lot of different spaces. Our team is not just, is one, we have about twenty-some total between sales, support staff, accounting, and the actual the nerds of the group. So my team's built myself and, and five other that are each, we have, we have so kind of the tier-one technicians that would kind of be the, the first on-call. So kind of how our support is based off of is, you know, we're gonna try to fix everything right now. So you call in, we wanna, we wanna get you up and going right now. You know, like you guys addressed, the concern is, is obviously the travel. It's an hour drive, you know, hour fifteen when you throw in some traffic in there. So we, we have twenty-four-seven coverage on-call on that. We run a program that installs on everyone's computer. So we know about a problem before you guys need to call us. So a lot of different options to kind of, to take away from the fear of, of having to travel or having someone to, to come out. I mean, I would say ninety percent of the issues we can solve remotely. Would you quarterly walk in? So we would come in here and then physically inspect the environment. You guys would get to see our faces. So it's not just a, a guy on the phone or a lady on the phone that you talk to. So yet we've, we've kind of addressed two different proposals on there. The one was kind of a, a full manual, manufacturer services contract, a, a monthly number, if you would. And we kind of based that off of what we figured the, the everyday users in your guys' county would be. So not just in this building, but the downtown buildings and the different areas of your guys' government that would need kind of the everyday support. So maybe not necessarily the, the guys that are out in the cars and, you know, on the, the building crew or the, the street crews that, you know, they might touch a computer once a week. So we kind of based that off of forty users at fifty dollars a user. So that the contracted price on there for that would be around two thousand a month. So that would be a hard number for you guys to budget in there. It would never be more or less. The only thing that would, would come in there is if, you know, right now you guys are on a three-year rotation for computers. So obviously that would still factor in there for hardware, anything like that would go in there. The other way we do things, and, and another popular option is just hourly rate. So a break fix. The, the, the good and bad of that is, you know, obviously some months you're gonna have less calls. So you know kind of, hey, it's two hours this month and ten hours next month. You know, it's gonna always be a variety of numbers. So that rate, our hourly rate is a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour. You know, call us, we'll fix it. The downside of that is we're, it's, it's a reactive measure. So you're, you have something that's, that's broken. Now we're reacting to it. The other measure is we, we don't like to get calls, not necessarily. We don't like to talk to you fine folks, but necessarily, we wanna make sure that everything on our ends. Everything's crossed, you know, everything's dotted, that, that everything's tight, secure in here, and then we're not hearing from you guys. So everything's just the normal hard drives out, we need to upgrade type calls. So with that software, we're always running security audits. We're always making sure everything's moving forward in a, a nice function. So the other one's kind of a proactive feature. We're gonna get everything going the way we, we feel is the most secure that you guys wanna to take it. So budget-wise, there's, there's two different numbers there. Like I said, you guys, I think have, or Dan for sure has those, those two numbers, but yeah, you're looking at forty users at fifty bucks and then the hundred and twenty-five an hour. So any, any questions for our firm or how we operate or?
Do you have any other clients in the area?
So, so actually with the, the business, yeah. So Yankton, in the Yankton area, we got a couple manufacturing clinics. We worked part-time out in the, the Archie range out here. So we've had a lot of a sales slash install in the Yankton area and more so in a lot of Vermillion. Oddly enough, a lot of the, the frat houses and stuff we all support in Vermillion. I have no idea how that came about, but almost all of them. So yeah, we do have a lot of clients in this area, and then obviously up in the, the Turner County, my neck of the woods. So.
Okay, great. Appreciate you coming down. Any questions for him right now? And those are in your email, not in the packet. The, what you're referring to.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, if you've got any questions, you guys are, feel free to email us, anything like that in the meantime. And you know, we look forward to your guys' decision and here to support you any way we can. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for having me.
Enjoy your date night.
Next up, the nine-one-one committee at the last meeting made a request.
One, one thing. So are we gonna put out an RFP then? And did we agree on that? That's what we're gonna do for services or what, what do we wanna do?
What's the limit for services like this for bidding? Is it fifty?
Fifty, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
Or at least advertise to get some more, you know, because
That's easy. Yeah, we've already got a draft. So it would be long, take long to get one.
November is when services cease. So, I mean, we need to do something pretty soon.
Okay. So I would say, what do we have?
Get that on the next meeting, maybe that draft.
September, October, November. We meet the second and the sixteenth. What do you think?
I think we, since we have the draft, I think we could bring that to the next meeting.
The second?
Yeah.
Okay, so Valley, you got that? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
At the last nine-one-one committee meeting, there is a request that we, we do something more with the RV park addressing. They had an issue at that time that they had trouble finding someone. And so they had requested that, could we possibly either change our ordinance or at least administratively start requesting an actual site plan with unit numbers for each, each pad in, in the RV park to make it easier for them. This is something that in the RSD, it's not required as part of the rural addressing. County ordinances can be passed, you know, asking that, we can ask for signage and things, but this is something that's not currently required in most counties, but they usually just get one main address and then they go from there. But, but unit numbers obviously could create a quicker response and and so it could improve the emergency vehicle response capabilities and even utility company response capabilities also. So the question is where do we wanna go? Do we wanna do an ordinance change and require the site plan with units on all new RV park campgrounds or from here on? Or, or should we also request site plans for existing RV parks and campgrounds? That's, that was kind of the question.
How are mobile home parks? Dude.
Most of them have addresses.
Most of them each have their own address? So they're not like a unit number?
No, they usually have numbers actually right on the trailer.
So you've spoken to probably most of our RV parks out here?
Yeah, and, you know, they're, they're helping every way they can, but, but this is just something that they thought would help them out a lot if we were interested in wanting to move forward on it. I guess the biggest question is, do we just do it for the new or do we wanna contact all the, all the pre-current ones and have them create one too?
You know, probably, I, I know some folks have made the comment that we're probably getting saturated with RV parks. We may never have another one built.
That's true.
So even if we have two, that would be such a minority of what we've got. So I think we really, really need to highly encourage it.
Yeah.
And I believe they will work with that for the betterment of their clients.
Yeah, I
But as far as putting it in the ordinance.
Can't you just, as a planning commission, say that the each spot's gonna have a number?
Yeah, we could certainly do that in, at the administrative phase and as they submit plans, ask that they submit a drawing with unit numbers on it. And it's just that it push comes to shove, you know, it's
Don't approve it.
Some, yeah.
Well, but the, the challenge becomes when we all are, you know, twenty years down the road, and we've moved on, and the next group says, well, I didn't know we were doing that. And it's, if, if it's not somewhere that's required, it eventually will go away.
Aren't we using that little checklist that was presented a, a month ago? We're kind of using that a little
Yeah, we haven't had anyone in since then yet.
Add and utilize that because they, they that would make sense.
I think that makes sense. We can administratively do it at least to start with. And, and I'm even willing to contact the existing ones and see if they can provide us something.
So you, excuse me, you've not had another request?
Not yet.
Well
Neil Lang's coming through this next meeting to expand. Neil Lang is expanding.
He's already started behind the laser barn?
Yeah, to the north there. That's the only one.
Doesn't he have to get the approval before he starts his?
Well, you can start doing landscaping and things, but but, but yeah, that's at the next, next meeting.
Won't, won't these be outdated almost monthly as campers come in and out?
With the, the spot number, so it'd be
Just the spot.
Spot number fifteen.
Number. So, so you know, if they have two hundred and fifty spots, they would just number them one through two fifty. At least they'd have some idea which, which, which area they're driving to.
If we're gonna do that too, it would be nice to kind of label them all the same, whether they go from
Right.
to right or right to left.
Right.
You know, it's a li- little bit of thought into that when we're doing it. So, yeah, I think a holistic approach like you're doing is the right way to do it. So.
You see that at the campgrounds, at the lakes, you know, they all have unit numbers on a post, utility post or something. So I think it makes a lot of sense, but I think that'll be good direction. I think that's all we need. Thanks a lot.
Item eleven, Mr. Hunhoff.
Congratulations on the soccer championship. It was very exciting.
Not me. The boys did it. All I did was, was yell. You can probably still hear it, my voice.
Quite an exciting game.
It was, absolutely.
We had a busy third quarter. July, we collected thirty-eight thousand three hundred. August, we collected thirty-nine thousand two hundred. September was a little slower, collected thirty thousand two hundred, but historically, that still would have been considered a very good month. It's just in this particular year, it's, it's a little lower than norm. And most of that drop-off was a resort, a result of real estate sales because in July, we sold sixteen point five million in real estate. In August, we saw sixteen point one million. And then in September, it was down to ten, or excuse me, ten point four million. So that was the, the main difference in those months. For the year, well, I'll start back. I'll get back to the quarter. We had one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine transactions. I was comparing the third quarter to the third quarter of twenty twenty. And we're up in a lot of areas. For instance, compared to the third quarter of twenty twenty, we sold fifty-six more birth certificates, fifty-three more death certificates. We had thirteen more marriage licenses, thirty more deeds. We had collected six thousand five hundred more. And the real estate sales was up eight point eight million compared to third quarter twenty twenty. So a lot of increases. We've already had a hundred and forty-two million dollars in real estate sold this year. And that's twenty-three million ahead of last year's complete year record of a hundred and nineteen, and we have two and a half months to go. So that's looking real good. I was talking about the vital records for the year to this point. We have sold a hundred and eighty more birth certificates than last year, and we had two hundred and seventy more death certificates. So we're seeing an increase in vital records activity. That's about it, unless you have any questions.
Busy.
Yeah, we're, we're busy. We like it that way.
And prices are up, so that certainly helps the total.
Move to approve the registered deeds quarterly report.
Second.
Motion by Clemmich, second by Kettering to approve the ROD quarterly report. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. Sir, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Did we approve the ambulance report?
Yes. Sheriff. Sheriff. Welcome.
Must be boring, John. I've seen you here twice now. You have all the documentation, I think, the report. It's, it's looking pretty good. I will surpass at this rate, will surpass a million dollars again this year, and, and revenue, we're, as of right now, we're about a hundred and thirty ahead of last year at the same time, so getting busier.
Question on the BIA. It looks like that's very little business with them.
Yeah, it goes in spurts, you know, they'll, sometimes they'll close one of their jails, or they'll have problems in one of their jails certain times of the year, and, and then they'll, they, they have a contract with us. They update it every year. Some years, they use us more than others. And they're probably, you know, i- if we're near capacity, we just can't accept more in, so.
Any questions? Concerns? Entertain a motion to approve. I'd move to approve the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve the report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries.
I just noticed this month that the year on top of one of the pages is wrong. They just didn't change it in the computer, but.
All right.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Caught it.
Yeah.
Next up, Mr. Mangold, come on up.
Good evening. I changed, if you noticed on my one template, I changed it a little bit. I have the total contacts, then underneath there, I put whether I'm up or down the numbers. Then underneath that line, I also put the number of presentations, the number of people present. So for July, we were up seven people in the office, down one in August, down six in September. But if you notice for the outreach, we had fifty-three in July, fifteen in August. That was a little low. I apologize for that, and then September, it was a hundred and forty-eight. And I'll be honest, I got a hundred, hundred and ten of them at the National Guard unit. They did a picnic, family picnic, and I got to hit all of them at one time, and that was very, very beneficial. Because the families, seems like the spouses listen better than the soldiers do, so. Couple other things to add to it. It, it's just how it is. I, you know, I'll admit it, I didn't listen that, that well to those benefits. To add to it a little bit, for the accreditations, I now carry two right now. I have one through the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs, and one through the American Legion, through the, through the VA. Right now, something that, this isn't on the notes that I sent out to you. Something else that's happening right now is the VA is currently onboarding about two thousand more employees. With that, things are slowing down, because they're training them, they're doing things, different things, so we've already seen a change. I had some claims that were coming through, and I had one claim that shocked me. It came through in three weeks. Got approved. I was shocked, I was happy, you know, but now I've got ones that are five months out, and I'm fighting to call them. And that's just how it is right now. It seems like they're slowing down a little bit on me. Another part to that is, right now, I've been in the process of getting my VBMS access. That is the Veterans Benefits Management System, that allows me to access their healthcare information that they're allowed to share with us. Because they're onboarding those two thousand people, and they're doing, I gotta do a background check, all that stuff, because they're onboarding them, and I'm an affiliate, as they call it, and I'm not a federal employee. I just got pushed to the back burner, so I don't I've been on them trying to see how far I can get. Right now, we don't know. I there's a good possibility you got, but pushed back another month. That kind of stinks for the veterans, because right now, I gotta rely on other people to get that information on where we're sitting at for. Otherwise, still going out. I'm at that point where it seems like I got more outreach events available, or different events that I can go to than I have time. So right now, I'm kind of picking which ones it seems like are the best benefit, cuz otherwise, if I do them all, I'll be in the office maybe one day, one, one hour a day, and that doesn't benefit anybody. It's the way I look at it, so. But I am doing what this, I am doing the Spark Events. I've had good success with networking through that. I was, I did attend the Stand Down for Veterans, for homeless veterans. That was beneficial. I was able to network with quite a few people, and one veteran actually benefited out of me meeting a new person, so. Any questions?
I think so. I think you covered it well.
Okay, thank you.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the Veteran's Service Officer Quarterly Reports.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the VSO report. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Cody, for doing a great job.
And we are right on time, item fourteen. You don't look like Mr. Thurman. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name is Liz Lynch, and Troy is out of town, so I volunteered to present to the commission. You have the quarterly report.
Yes, ma'am.
So would you like me to just briefly go through?
If there's anything you care to highlight, you're welcome to do so.
All right, I'll highlight a few of the things. This is for reporting July first through September. The total food pantry visits were three hundred and twenty visits, feeding five hundred and twenty people, and at least a hundred and ninety-three of them were seventeen years of age or younger. We've had the backpacks, quilts, diaper, those types of things that go out, that's up to thirty-eight. New clients, new families, fifty-four new families have come to the contact center. Emergency assistance that has a total of fifty households have sought the emergency assistance for financial, like helping with rents, et cetera, utilities. And so there is a synopsis there of food, what we've spent in the third quarter, fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for food. People have come for gas and oil, a hundred and thirty dollars. Assisting people with rents and utilities, how, rents and housing, two thousand forty-five. Utilities, we have helped people for two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. People have come in for medication helps, four hundred and nineteen, and lodging, people who have need, like an overnight lodging, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. So just for that third quarter, the total of the assistance that the contact center provides to the Yankton community is twenty thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Any questions?
I'd like to comment, this week at Optimus, Troy spoke, and I think it's the first time that I can remember somebody speaking for almost the entire hour. And the people in attendance were overwhelmed by the things that you guys are doing.
Well, Troy as the new director is doing a really good job. He is really reaching out for community contributions, because funding has been lowered, not only United Way. I don't know, have you made your?
Yeah, we lowered yours too, this year.
So he has done a tremendous job writing to churches, doing grant, writing grants, just reaching out to the community and explaining the situation and asking for contributions, and Yankton has been a tremendous gift-giving community, so.
Thank you.
Glad he was there.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the welfare quarterly report.
I'll move approval of the welfare monthly report.
Quarterly.
Quarterly report.
So motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the welfare report. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. And we are seven o'clock, public defenders. It's Youngbird.
Just sneak up there where they're passing, so move.
Thank you. I don't have a new presentation, since Dan had one last week. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have about anything. I will say that, right before I came over here, about an hour before I came over here, I did go through the numbers of, and Wanda will know what I'm talking about, when I say stack week numbers, the number of cases that we had scheduled for stack week, which are all felony cases. They're scheduled every three months. And, and twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, it was about the same, about a hundred and fifty cases, and then in twenty months, so far this year, we've had two hundred and five.
And how many of those have gone to trial in the last year?
Hardly any of them do, but we have two hundred and five cases that were scheduled for trial at one time that we had to work to resolve. The last trial, the last jury trial we've had is, was mine in twenty nineteen.
Which is who?
I had a trial in twenty nineteen, in December, and then COVID hit.
In twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
And then Jake Law had one in twenty, when, either twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I can't remember.
His name's not Jake, Josh.
Oh, Josh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, without a lawyer, yeah.
Yeah. And so, what is this? I went back and did some county comparisons as well. And according to my county comparisons, this is, this being your front sheet, is somewhat not informative in as much as it doesn't go by population, and it doesn't note the breakdown. For example, Brown County pays their fifty thousand dollars to seven different firms.
Right.
So what that results in, at least in my estimation or my research, was that Brown County pays seven different firms, Clay County pays one, Cottington pays two, Davison pays two, Hughes pays three, Union pays three, and Yankton pays one. And as a result of Brown, Cottington, Davison, Hughes, Union, they have basically divested themselves of the other court appointment conflicts and co-defendants.
I don't think entirely. I know Brown told me that they basically hardly ever have to go outside of their contract.
Exactly.
Seven.
Because they have seven.
Right.
But the reason I looked this up is because in September, Yankton County paid forty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents in court appointed, which includes the thirteen thousand and change for the Hines of Ritt. So in addition to what your firm has paid, excuse me, Yankton County is paying twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars more. So if we had a where, and of that, twenty-eight thousand thirteen went to the Hines, and seventy-nine hundred went to Garrett Horn's firm, just for the month of September. So, which I assume he is having co-defendants or conflicts.
Yeah, and he gets private work just as you do, and you get our conflicts as well and private work, and yeah, I would say most of the cases go to you or Garrett. Also Tyler Mattson.
Tyler.
Who else? Not really court-appointed, not very many.
Not very many anymore.
No.
Mike occasionally.
Right, and I know you guys got this already, but this shows you, you know, everybody knows kind of the population of each county, and it kind of breaks down the number of felonies and misdemeanors, which of course is the difference in what, say, Brown County pays, or any other larger county. They've got more felonies and misdemeanors in the year, and more abusive black cases, they've got more juvenile cases. They don't have mental illness cases like we do, but.
Excuse me, and it's also been broken down by population, city and county per person.
What's your question?
It wasn't a question, it was a statement. We've also broken it down, city and county by population.
Right.
In an effort, but I guess one of my questions is, where were you during budget? As we spent two arduous, I would say, months going over budget.
That's a great question. We, actually, we were under the assumption that you didn't set the budget till September.
And it was in the newspaper.
I know, well.
The proposed one and the final one, and it's in the minutes every.
No, that was our, that was our fault, and we certainly can come back next year again, but right now.
January. January, February, is when we start.
We can do that.
Because that makes sense to me, because we've already budgeted for.
I, I get it, but we're here for dual reasons. We're here for either the COVID money or for a raise, and which can wait till next year.
Well, I understand the COVID money, but the COVID money and adding another person to your firm does not fix the co-defendant conflict issue in my mind.
And I don't know that, and you, you're probably right there, but I don't know that we're looking to actually hire somebody. We would look to contract out.
Well, then why wouldn't we just contract out?
Well, you can.
Why wouldn't the, the county commission open it up for bids and contract out and do what, and hire for whatever reason, a part-time public defender to take the conflict people?
Well, that's what other, a lot of other counties do, so, yeah, I'm just presenting what I have.
The ones that I talk to, that's what they do.
That's true. But as far as what I've given you, do you have any other questions for me, as far as explanation, or I'll try to explain or answer your question?
And I, I guess I would also note that on your printout, it says that additional staff, and I assume you're meaning additional staff, there is a juvenile justice program grant, which is what hired.
Yeah, this, this actually came from Ms. Lily, so, but I wanted to just provide it so you guys knew the number of felonies and misdemeanors.
So you didn't get any of the federal funds that we voted for?
No, that went to the Boys and Girls Club. Deb, these numbers that you put together, are these for a twelve-month rolling period?
They were, that was, those were the only numbers that we could get from the state.
Okay.
Because that, I mean, with COVID, everybody was struggling, and so those numbers are the only numbers that we could get from the state. And according to them, that's what we counted. And then that last category is when I added, like Davison had the coordinator and the state's attorney's office using federal funds. So our fourth attorney was what got approved. That was the treasury.
Yeah. Right.
And all she does is juveniles.
Yes, and A and M. She also does abuse.
Well, true, Ed, you do the misdemeanors and Tyler does the felonies.
Okay, so I just want to clarify kind of what the ask is. I think at the last meeting, and forgive me, I had to leave early, was that your plan was to add another staff member, you know, and I think the concern there is where if we're adding a staff member to your firm, because COVID has put us behind, is that a year position? And then after that, we go back to maybe an inflationary off what our base pay is now?
Right.
So, I think that's the concern, you know, hiring a new person is a big commitment.
Right.
Or is this where we haven't had a raise in five years, and we think some inflationary raise is six years?
Right.
We think some inflationary consideration needs to be given, and, and it looks like one of the contracts you gave, they put like a 3.75% change in like a three-year contract.
Some is two, three percent, some is.
Correct. You know, our budget this year, or for 2022, was allowed to go up 2.9% with CPI and growth put together.
Well, my first thought is to do it like the state's attorney's office did, is make it a three-year position. And and hopefully, when we are timely enough to ask for any raise, that we get in here and ask for it, and try to get a, a contract that's much like the other counties, where it goes for three years, and then we renegotiate and whatever, and we work in, you know, those 3% raises or whatever.
You know, and, and so then that poses the next question, if that is, is kind of the ask is, this here shows, I'm just going to pick on felonies, 303 for Yankton. So, if you're looking to add another attorney, are you up to 450 felony cases? Do you see where I'm kind of going with that?
Yeah.
This, this is our base caseload, and if we're going to add another staff member that the county has to pay for, do we show 50% increase of your workload going forward?
No, I think that, that having two people handle everything that we do, felonies, misdemeanors, abuse neglect cases, juveniles, mental illness hearings, all for Yankton County, it used to be manageable. It, it, it's hard to do, is what we're saying. We would like one more person.
Okay. Other questions?
Have you considered the legislation that's going to the legislature this year, which is to make all controlled substance charges not felonies, misdemeanors, which won't that reduce the workload significantly from felonies to misdemeanors? They're just going to be tickets.
Yeah, if it happens, yeah.
And if that happens, how many actual rape trials, rapes are there in Yankton? In a year?
Yeah, I couldn't give you a number. We have all kinds of different cases that we handle, rapes included.
No, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, isn't that going to markedly reduce the amount of felony work?
For sure, felony work, yes.
And.
Work, work in general, no, but felony work is by far the most tasking, for sure.
Well, there will be, presumably, these folks that like to do controlled substances will continue to do it and pay their ticket and walk down the road. Why would they want to, an attorney for any reason?
Yeah.
If you can just go and pay a ticket like a speeding ticket.
Right. I, I don't know what the legislature's going to do, so I can't really answer that.
But we'd know more next year.
Any other, any other questions for?
I actually worked that out, because I have a question.
Not the possession.
So, the way I read this, it's even not a discussion. I don't think it affects possession. I think it only affects ingestion. So, if their only charge is, at some point you took in a drug, that's the proposal of that one. But if they actually have anything.
And how foolish would you be if you were a drug consumer to have it on you and not eat it when the cop showed up?
Oh, they do it all the time.
I know they do it all the time.
They're trying to hide it.
Which, which makes it ingestion.
Which makes us so busy.
And not a felony. Well, yeah, I've had that same conversation, because it's a question of if they're going to do all of it or just some of it. Because if it's an illness, then they shouldn't go to prison, because you don't go to prison for diabetes. Whereas if it's a crime, then we should keep treating it as a crime. Somebody's got to pick.
I'm done. You have any other comments, Deb?
Um, you know, I can honestly say we benefited from having that additional person. Tyler and I just, just talked about that. The way I read the treasury ruling, it says attorneys. Again, you know, I think Mr. Clemish talked about how we, I think, determine, but, you know, we, we were well aware of it as well, that to get someone and utilize the ARPA funds, there would be an end to it, you know, and we'll figure it out in our budget somehow. But it has benefited us. I don't know how much our caseload has increased. We're both new, you know, we're a year and a half into it. But Mr. Billings could tell you, it's hard to cover everything. So, for our office, having that fourth person has certainly made a difference. We've seen, in our cases that we've been able to take to completion, happen much more quickly. And for our office, even one felony takes an attorney out of play in our office, it weren't weeks. Even if in the end they settle.
Which, most of them do. But you're still working the case the whole time.
Virtually, they all settle. One way or another.
Right. But if it, if it takes it all the way up, we see that, or it just takes someone that entire time to do it.
Well, I understand that. But I guess my concern is adding another attorney and creating an automatic conflict. I mean, if, if the county wants to hire another attorney using ARPA funds and adjust contracts, that's one thing. But that's one reason that Garrett Horn got $7,900 last month, is because there was some conflict somewhere, or a co-defendant.
Help me understand. Cottington County, it looks like they've got pretty good crime rates going. 605 felonies, 1,056 misdemeanors, 159 juvenile. And according to this other, i- is it, is this their base?
Which one are you looking at? I'm sorry, Don.
He's looking at the one with the cases, all the cases, that one.
Public defender fees.
Paid to two separate firms, $17,250 paid to two different firms, so that if, yes, so that if the primary firm has a conflict, the secondary firm gets.
But the total.
Is still $17,000.
Twenty-three thousand in 2022.
It is. Well, I just gave you those two contracts, just add them up.
Yeah.
I mean, primary and secondary, and they add up to 23.
Oh, it's still somehow less than the $28,000 we paid last month and the $43,000.
Yeah. But Cottington has, they do have conflicts as well, so I'm sure they pay extra. They have conflicts, I'm sure.
Oh, I get that.
They pay more.
And Don, over to the side, they have four full-time attorneys as part of that caseload listed, whereas Yankton has two full-time attorneys.
Three now, that one.
This is just, I think these are just for the public defenders, or are these attorneys your office? Okay, so these are your office. This is county, okay.
So, that's the state's attorney's office.
Yeah, that, that was her sheet. I, I borrowed it.
So.
She had help.
No, you took it.
I took it from her. I did.
So, this is.
So, would we like to put this on our next agenda to discuss further? I know Joe couldn't be here tonight. He still has some questions. I did talk to him briefly about that.
Well, I would recommend for sure that they come back during budget next year.
Commissioner Clemish, do you have any comments?
Oh, I think Wanda brought up a great point with the Attorney General presenting that. That could really change a lot of things, I, I think, in a, in a good way. And I'm okay with going to the next meeting.
I think we get by very cheaply, the services that are provided by the the office.
I'm sorry, I can't hear of you.
That's what my wife says, too. I said, I think we get by very economically, cheaply, with the way it's set up right now in our caseloads. I would like to see salary review at the budgeting process time, in, in you.
That was our mistake. Yeah, that was our mistake.
Any other questions at this time?
No.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So, we're coming two weeks?
Um.
Or longer?
When does budget start for sure, just so they know?
Oh, for next year?
Yeah.
We usually have formal meetings, uh, first part of June.
Okay.
For that.
Okay.
So, I say May.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Library lady, come on up. Item 16, library, 7:20.
Good evening, Dana Schmidt from the Yankton Community Library.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight. I brought you guys the agreement for the provision of library services, but I just wanted to give you a little library update first. We're actually celebrating National Friends of the Library Week this week, and our friends at the library, they raise money for the library for things that are outside of our regular budget, and they mainly do that by having regular book sales. And it always amazes me, they get donated books from people and they sell them for 50 cents or a dollar a piece, and they've made some money to be able to donate some different things to the library. So, this week is just a great time to be able to recognize them. If you'd like to show personal support to the library, it would be great if you wanted to become a member. Our Yankton Friends Group was established in 1992, and they usually did a, a monthly book sale, and then when COVID hit, they had to kind of shift gears and they started doing some outside sales. And that just increased their visibility and their profits. They went from making about $50 to $100 per sale, to making between 500 and 1,000 per sale. So, really, a great dedicated group of people there. And they've done things like our summer reading performers, they help sponsor those. They've provided prizes for summer reading. They've provided furniture for the library that was outside our budget, different things like that. And one of the more recent and notable things that they're doing is helping us with digitizing our microfilm. They donated about close to $5,000 to the library to help us digitize all of our microfilm. So, that's Yankton Papers, as soon as it started, so like in the 1880s at some point. So, that's a huge project and great that they're able to help us with that. So, again, if you're interested in helping with that, it's a very minimal fee to become a member. So, I have the agreement for the provision of library services here, and that was in your packet for you to review. There really wasn't much changes in the wording from last year. But as you guys have already approved, $15,000 donation for 2022. And what that means is, members that are in Yankton County, sorry, my voice is all cracking, inside Yankton County but outside city limits, they would pay $20 towards a yearly library card. Whereas if you're outside of Yankton County, it's $40. So, the thought kind of is the Yankton County contribution helps with that.
What if you own property within Yankton, the city of Yankton, but live outside?
Then you would not have to pay a fee. So, if you do have, if you have property inside city limits, you wouldn't have to pay the fee. And that goes to, if you live outside of Yankton County, but you own something in, inside Yankton County, you would pay the Yankton County fee. So, and that's for the whole household, for the whole year, which really is a great deal. I think you can get a lot of benefit from that, a lot of free entertainment, books and movies to check out. Just kind of for an example, in September, we checked out 8,452 physical items and over 2,000 ebooks. So, people are reading and people are using the library. So, if anyone has questions about the agreement or anything about the library, I'd be happy to answer that for you.
I can say that having the sales outside is helpful, because when you're randomly driving by on a Saturday, you go, book sale.
Yep.
Whereas when they're inside, I don't, I didn't know.
Yeah, it's been a huge increase, and they purchased some canopies, which would help, you know, with the shade and if it's drizzling a little bit, but I think that makes people stop too, because it's like, you want to know what's going on. So, yeah, really a big increase. Plus, where they were doing it in the garage was not really very ADA accessible. It was pretty narrow, row, it was pretty small space. So, it allows people to spread out. It allows for a lot more inventory to be out at one time. So, really, they've made some really great changes in the last couple of years. So, do good things for us.
I move for the approval of the agreement for the provision of library services.
Second.
So, have a motion by Fox, second by Kettering, to approve the agreement for library services.
Thank you.
For the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
Thanks, Dana.
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
That'll work. All right, moving on to item 17, performance evaluation discussion. And my understanding was, this was placed on this agenda at the last meeting? Anybody want to discuss anything?
I think it was me.
Go ahead, Don, if you've got something.
I'd, I'd just like to have confirmation of who we're supposed to give evaluations to, the form that we're supposed to use, and maybe some counseling on how to fill it out. I'm not sure that, that we shouldn't have an HR representative from that firm come and talk to us about the, the concept of performance evaluations.
Okay. I can certainly give Alternative HRD a call and see if they have time to come down and do some training on that. There is a form, we did approve it. Oh, when did we approve it?
Yeah.
We did. Yep, and I can, you've got the form. Certainly, this, in November, I will review Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Solatchek, Mr. Scherschlick. Those are the three I have contacts with, and I'll have Joe sit in with Mr. Enter the Highway as well.
See, I, I think we as a board should be the ones who evaluate the department head, the non-elected department heads. I think that makes a lot more sense than just a couple people doing that, because it's input from us as the entire board. That's, that's what I would like to see happen, is certainly, people who work with them more can provide input, but I think the, the performance evaluations should come from the entire commission.
So, do you envision that at like a executive session with five of? So do you envision that at like a executive session with five of us in there?
And I believe that that's actually what had happened years prior from what I was told. Because, you know, a lot of, a lot of times, the department heads have done a great job, and that's the, you know, time to give them encouragement and areas, you know, to improve on. And the way we have the the handbook set up is they're required to do evaluations of their subordinates. So they should get an evaluation as well from us. I mean, that's really how it should work, and what's probably happening now is they're doing the evals, you know, without a lot of guidance and direction from the commission on their support. And so that's something that I'd like to see, and maybe we could have a brief special meeting or something like that, executive session and go through it. That's what I'd like to see anyway.
Comments on that?
I would be, if I were a department head, I would be very nervous and not very open if I sat down across from five other people. I'm not sure that.
Maybe just you with your winning personality.
That could be. That could be. Is it, Gary, is this, is this a function that that you kind of monitor? Who's going to do the reviews of which department heads and?
No, we do. Well, that wasn't really specified when we went through. That wasn't really specified when we went through the process. I guess my assumption was is that whoever represented that department would be doing the evaluation, but I think most of us are waiting to see what it's going to work also.
So would it work for, say, every commissioner to fill out the form? And I will, I will pick on Paul. So for Paul, everybody fills out the form. And since I'm the liaison, I take all those forms in and discuss it with Paul. Would that be a better approach?
Probably less nerve-wracking.
Yeah, from their perspective, certainly.
From their perspective, yeah.
Does that, as you know, I sent yours to me last month. Mine was due this month and and I said, I don't know who you want this said to, but I filled out my part of the employee portion so that the commission just has to fill in their portion and and move forward on it. But but I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to care if we do it with all five of you, but but and and getting that scheduled could be an issue. Seems like it might be easier just with one or two, but that's just my thought. That's that's kind of how we did it in Brown. Except I sat in on all the department head reviews too, but but it was usually just one or two commissioners.
Okay. Thoughts on that? Okay. How about if I put a list together of the non-elected department heads and I will talk with them and see if they have a preference for how to, there might be some who want to sit down with all five of us. And then I will let all of you know, kind of their feedback and.
And just, just an idea, maybe if we've got somebody who wants to visit with all five of us, we do it after a meeting some night for twenty minutes because we're already all here.
Okay.
Or most of us.
Okay. All righty. Any other comments on that, Don?
Well, I think from my standpoint, from my history and performance evaluations in HR departments. I think it's only fair that we give a fair evaluation to employees on a timely basis and and five of us need to be on the same the same evaluation level. Because I don't know what it was like with you in the army, but when I was in there, evaluations, you, everybody got a hundred percent. Unless they wanted to riff you and then, you know, you got an eighty.
And we're, we're actually really behind the curve because we should have explained our expectations right when that handbook came out and, you know, it, you should have had an initial counseling session, and then this should have been the year and one coming up. But hindsight being important.
So item eighteen, discuss holiday party. I know we didn't have one last year because of COVID, so the year before. Things are starting to blur now. Historically, you've had them in January. Did you?
January is a better month, in my opinion.
Usually because the family focus is usually December and and then January would roll around. And certainly, we don't have to pick a time. It was discussed at one point, we were hoping to have a summer picnic, and then I think last year COVID kind of put a squash on that and this year too. So if we're looking at a holiday party, certainly my vote would be for January.
We already had an open house with and we're having one next Monday, so hopefully the flyers are going out.
For what?
Just a meet and greet for eleven, from eleven to one for employees in the government building and wherever else. Just so we can read everything. So Monday, eleven to one, one lunch.
There you go.
I was at the last one, so.
You weren't supposed to say anything. Okay, that's a great idea. It is a great idea. Okay, so I'll talk to Patty when she's back and see what they've done in the past and locations, et cetera, and I'll bring a report to.
And when they, I'd like to see it structured a little bit different. Instead, I have, like always seems to happen, all the highway department people sit together, all the ambulance. We somehow divide it up so there's interaction between all employees in the county.
How do you propose that work?
I'll figure it out.
We just have a fishbowl with table numbers and you draw one at the beginning.
Well, there you go.
There you go. You and your significant other set at table eight tonight. Something like that.
Yep.
So, okay. All righty. Sounds good, Don. And item nineteen is our marijuana application. So there's a draft version in your packet, and I believe.
No, there's a handout that's been updated.
There's a handout as well.
There was only one question change from what Valley had posted, and it was just the rewording of
Page two of what we have.
Yes. So the first page is actually just going to go on the envelope. And we think Valley thinks it can get printed on the envelope so that they know what's determined.
And this stuff goes inside.
And then this would go inside. This is a better, got the what they're proposing as their Yankton County planning and zoning approval. So that would be in the packet, and they would have to take that upstairs to planning and zoning. They would just get a packet, they would have an application, it would have all the additional forms that they would need, and then they would just return it in that envelope so that the auditor just has everything.
I think it looks very good.
It's organized neatly. When I compared it to the ordinance we passed, I think you covered everything. Yeah, it looks really good.
Yeah, I can't make the boxes.
I said, make a motion to approve the medical marijuana application as presented in the
Handout.
Handout copy.
Yep.
With the corrections.
I would second.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Fox, to approve the medical marijuana application, which includes a checklist and the application. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. And we're still on for November fourth. Okay. Hopefully, they're monitoring what the legislature may or may not do.
Obviously, we will. I mean, I, at this point, I don't see a need to move forward.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they could not do anything. Well, it'll be legal until certainly June first because laws, new laws don't take effect till what, June first, right? Or July first, July first. Thank you. So it's on the applicant's responsibility to take that on. We are at item twenty, public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment at this time? There being none, I'll close public comment. Commission updates.
Last Friday, I went to Sioux Falls, I believe it was Friday, to a JDI conference meeting. Was very, very good. We sat through some actual trials of kids. And got to discuss the processes that they use, went through the juvenile detention center there and was shocked to see that there was one eleven-year-old child in the detention center in there for beating up his mother with his broomstick. I don't, if we can keep, if we can keep kids from going there, having to go there, it just seems like it's a good alter.
Other updates? There's a rogue conference tomorrow in Sioux Falls, which I'll be attending. You're going, Dan? Possibly going. I don't think Joe's going, so we won't have a quorum there. Other than that, I don't have anything. All right, we'll close twenty-one. We'll move on to twenty-two. I need a motion.
I move we go into executive session to discuss poor relief issues pursuant to STC, SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three and relative to litigation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to go into executive session for poor relief and litigation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now in executive session.
Oh.
All right, be sure to turn your microphones back on. Entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Move to come out of executive session.
Second. So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. We are now back in regular session.
I would make a motion to approve the agreement with Avera Sacred Heart Hospital for the payment of mental health exams as were particularly set forth on the document I have in my hand that Mr.'s sight sinker has in his hand as well. Do you want me to be more detailed than that? I don't know.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to approve a settlement with Avera. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. There will be no action taken for poor relief. And at this time, items for next meeting. I think we already recorded most of them as we went through the meeting, so.
Don, did you want to have a discussion on sanitary districts next?
Yes.
Put that on there.
You know, at this point, I'm not going to. I think I'll do a little, I might do a little bit more legwork, and if we feel we need to, we'll add it, but.
And I thought that for sure they were coming back next budget.
They are.
Okay, well, that's how I understood it.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Kettering to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight thirty-five.